Well, in the 21st, 2023 Select Board Meeting. Do we have amendments to the agenda tonight? I have two that came after the agenda was posted. Seth will talk about it, the possibility of a buyout property for flood in North Wilt. And also, there's a small contract, I'm gonna pass it around, for LCPC for Sal to administer or be project manager for our municipal planning grant for the schoolhouse. There won't be any additional fees, it's all built into the grant, but it's just an agreement with LCPC on that. We can take them up later. So we'll move on to the approval of the June 7th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Alright, that one.
What was it?
A second.
We have corrections, deletions, additions. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, or carry. Do we have any comments from the community? Well, then we'll move on to correspondence. We have a thank you letter for installing the guardrail on East Two, thanking the highway, the road crew, Kurt, and subcontractors and a number of people up in that area that travel, and we still send a thank you, which is very nice. We were briefly worried on the, we're going to have the July 15th is going to be the La Moya Valley Rail Trail Celebration, the opening of it, the governor's going to ride his bike from Swanton to St. Jonesbury. There's gonna be a big event in Morrisville from 1:00 to 2:00, that's the main event, and Senator Sanders will be there too. But they have agreed to stop in Wilt when they go through about 2:45. I know a number of people have started some planning for that. He is working on that with some other people that have volunteered, so if anyone wants to volunteer and help with that, we appreciate it. At least, you can come down and play a little bit.
Okay.
There's the issuance of burning permits, do we know what that's about?
The, the government has signed this. It's just a, basically it's respeaking the requirement for burning permits. This was signed a week ago.
Beach 161, Osprey 161, NAC related to issue 17 burning permits. The rules, do I give that to?
Under the.
Okay.
Lead you.
Received a letter from Vermont Green Energy Systems. Randy Bueller of Alana Lane has submitted an application to put in a small wind, along the sector windmill. And it's part of the requirement to notify. The joy he landed on your standard time there. I don't believe he's, it's for a certificate of public good and there's not no real public comment. All parties wishing additional information or who would like to make comments can contact me, and I have Tom Hanlon at Green Energies if you're interested. That's all we remember, correspondence. Alright, moving on to the town hill road issue. So thank you for coming out, um, tonight. For meeting tonight because Mr. Chris Marwood contacted me. He was just a little concerned with all the towns, people coming up. About new stuff, and that's been resolved, but now this second. So he didn't know where to go, so I thought we, the best thing was if we all met together talked about it and tried to iron out some of the concerns, we, we are not policing, we can't police you or anything, but maybe we threw some of the problems so that we can all be good neighbors, that's all, that's the only reason we're here.
Are we on start? Great, so my big issue is, yeah, people who were staying over there throughout the war season, that settlement is designed for six people, and you have up to 12 people there on a regular basis. And people staying in families. And last summer, one of his friends stayed there with his family all summer, dumping his sewage into the sewer system, and it backed up into their house, and they put on tour to see on Facebook, oh, we need to get a sewer bomb. I messaged them, or DM messaged them, and said, you need to get your sewer bomb, because you got so many people over there that it's gonna overflow. So, my big issue is people staying in campers, you got a property in the zone for one residence, and you got three over there. That's my huge problem. The other part that really pisses me off is, they ruined the sewer over there, it comes on to my front, and it's a man's system, and I'm gonna be an SOP if that happens. So they won't want me as a neighbor, I can tell you that for free. So, that's part of the problem. So that's kind of where we're at. We got people staying over there that, I don't care what people do with their property, I'll be honest with you, I'm the biggest one that thinks there should be lots of government. But when you do something that affects my property, then you piss me off. I'm gonna be honest, and I'm a straight shooter, if you ask anybody. And I'm telling you, I'm sick of dealing with their bullshit, their dog, I carry a pistol every time I walk. And I assured Chris, next time my dogs get dogged, uh, bit, I told Dean, I'm telling you guys right now, that dog will die. And it will be on camera, because they got humans all over our property, pointing right toward our house. And every time I walk my dog, my dogs give that one more time, we're done. So it's been an ongoing thing, and that we're leading to, I'm in the end, I'm on a piece of property that's not designed for that. And I called the state, and they assured me, I'm 110% right, and I've done it in writing, but the law is higher. So we need to stop this, need to be good neighbors and solve the bullshit. I'm gonna put it right on the line right there, I'm done dealing with their crap. And that's how good neighbors is gonna be, if things don't scrape around, they're gonna find out what good neighbor I could be. Because I have plenty of friends that shoot guns, all the gun, and what?
You don't want to be seen, you don't want to be seen.
No, I'm not saying I'm gonna do anything to them, but we've done it every way to make it my problem.
My, well, I was standing about two feet from my dog, we threatened to shoot my dog on my property.
That is not.
The dog to these, you know. Do you want?
Would you like to speak? I don't, so I'm prepared to come in here and listen to James tell a story about how miserable we are and all the things that have happened, been nothing to these people since we moved in. Then I was there hosting every time, our kid, as, as house secretary, I blocked out driveways for your same problems. I've been there to help with this internet issue with spam on, and fire alarms ringing, and people not in their camper. That state, that state exam that we gave this morning, they passed it by. Matt the gentleman's exploring, we break, knock on the door, it's themselves, like, walk around the ball campers, you have a whole bunch of ways to see where living. Please live with me. We drive by that camper every single day, we know that gentleman's car, it's a white car. They put in there a week and a half issue.
It was starting to be an everyday thing, just like it was before.
So you do have two campers?
There's two campers there, we have a more public perspective, did not count them until.
They're going to.
But the people stay in Wilt.
Right.
Both people stay in Wilt.
I've been there one time, not, I've never been there the same time.
It's not approved.
Well, we are going to hear, James, why do people live there? You know, right next to you.
Can I see it all? You, you gotta.
Want to sit here and argue, because you think you're right, you think so, right? Okay, that's fine.
It's not about being right, it's about, they're gonna, I'm giving truth away, a special truth. The dog catcher's been up there, he goes, just as long as I do, but they stress the truth.
That the dogs are tested in different ways.
They are now, they are now.
We're not gonna do. Debate, we're gonna debate this.
So the last time I was up there, I was a total misunderstanding, just so you guys know that I was called, and I might have got it mixed, I'm not sure, I was called by one of the, she said there was an issue with the dogs, but that's why I went up there. And I didn't see no issues, you needed one of you guys call, and that's why I said when I was there that I wasn't there for that reason, the reason I was there was because of the dog. So I didn't make no big deal out of it, and I did see that you guys have another fence, which, and then you put up another fence, which I think is great, I don't know if, I don't know, I'm not there, so I don't see what's going on, but I know in the past with the issues, and like I told, I can't, unless I see it, or unless it's on camera, I can't, don't accuse these guys who stop, or these guys who stop me, I don't see it, I can't be and make accusations, that's not, that's not, that's gotta be proven to me that it's gonna be from one of the eyes, and.
To ask the.
Yeah, but no, but anybody's fine, I'm just saying that.
That's a good idea.
Dog issue is done, we're dealing right now with the
It's, yeah.
The two trailers that we're gonna, um, this Mr. Ryan McCall from the Department of Environment and Conservation was up there today. Did you get anything writing from him?
I'm like, I just pulled the cases, suppose, and came to my apartment, it was sewage, and they put their ground, they put the dirt near the ground and everything else, and perfectly, not breaking any boundaries.
I think, I'm gonna refer you to the zoning administrator about having two campers on that property though. I don't have jurisdiction over that, but I believe that you should come in and talk to him about that issue.
And it is state law, they don't have to be booked in that sewer system, but I gotta just be government in order. I confirm that with the state, and I know they are, because last fall they had problems because they did so. And as soon as the call was made, all of a sudden, their buddies were gone, so I know that that's part of it. My D, as it stretched the.
Kind of resolve anything, I mean, our health officer's been up there, the state's been up there. I don't, I don't know what more we can do other than, the only thing I can see at this point is, you do need to talk to the zoning administrator about two mobile homes up there, uh, campers, I mean, on your property. And mounted days that they can be occupied a year. I don't know if it's 60 or 90.
90, I forgot, I don't know how that's this, and it was sort of.
For the last summer.
You know.
Merritt was there right from middle summer.
It's right now.
It's okay, but I was speaking to you for the record, that their super fails, because they're bull getting you, I will just down you. And I will go out.
Not have anything to do with, we have.
And me having the.
The town has no jurisdiction over sewers whatsoever. Fine, but you need to tell the state.
President, Federator.
You know, and what do they say right there?
They're saying that they don't, any sewage into that sewer system, that is against the law, and it's counted as a residence if those campers aren't registered and inspected, that counts as a primitive hand.
Right.
Why I've been asking him.
To go.
Fine, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm pretty pissed off, because black men have been in my family for years, and if they ruin their property, they're ruining mine. So, I don't care. So that's great, but it's not about getting.
Buy back.
I don't want it back, but I just want people who are gonna do what they're supposed to do there, that's all I want. If you ruin your sewer, I hope you have 30, 40,000.
We need, we need to move on, thank you. Do you think you could give us a copy of the letter?
Uh, I sent the stuff for dating to, uh, correctly, so you know.
So I need, and just speak to him, the zoning.
You should have the stuff, because the state said they were gonna educate you guys too, so.
Yeah, well, he knows, but he.
Well, they didn't know, because I was the one that owned the law, and they wanted it, so they didn't know.
It's in our zoning.
It may be in your zoning, but they were asking me, but I don't know, I'm just telling you, I sent the information, because they didn't know.
They didn't know.
You can frown on it, you want, I gotta, you can approve it. So.
Okay, I guess that's it, I didn't help anybody, but we're moving on.
Yeah. Go inside.
I'm behind.
Moving on to the Green Mountain ATV Club request.
I don't know that they're, they're not here.
I thought they spoke to you.
They did.
Should we stay with it until later?
Yeah, I mean, so the ATV club called regarding ATV, ATV coordinates here in Wilt. They want to connect my part of the Green River.
Excuse me, if you guys want to talk, go in the hall, please, you're welcome to. I just came here for. Sorry.
Part of the, part of the.
Okay. Yes.
So again, the ATV club had called, asking if there was an ordinance regarding ATVs. And they would like to mount a, they would have, they would like to propose to the town. We asked them to, to select one, excuse me, with some ideas and proposals, whatever, like, they're talking about. And I believe that he would set the agenda and all of the details, uh, pretty nicely.
Let's see, man, they're probably thinking class four roads and all the dirt roads probably in between.
They're thinking about, yes, and class four roads that cross over, but if we did, well, they, in their perspective, we did probably look at is if they do have to cross over some of our class three roads. And they were not commissioned to do so.
Cross over the trail, thanks.
So it's gonna be short traveling, yeah, same problem type, I think. It's, I don't know, we certainly might have not created.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess they don't, we'll table it, if they don't show up by the end of the meeting, we'll just reschedule.
Of course, but I'm gonna see what happens.
Megan. Megan. Stu, I forgot the copies, you know, about your application, which, I know emails in the slide board are.
Yep.
So, case.
This is one of the.
Yes, my email that I believe is in.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that you have.
Yeah, I think I, I sent to him, I quit together, yeah.
Um, it's on the screen, but it's been on all the way. I can hear the, the monster. So, yeah, so, um, LCPC, they have a pull together draft application for the clean water service providers through the wild basin, which is technically through the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. Um, they're acting as the clean water service provider, whole, whole way. All the wild basin, um, so this would be, uh, so five funding for limited area design, so 30% plan. For looking at, we're looking about flood mitigation, looking at help sizing the Gulf Line Bridge. And also flood drain bridges, which would allow increased flooding activity, um, try to flood mitigation through lowering flood waters, actually dissipate out onto the top lane, and try to reduce that energy of the wild branch, control the, a lot of energy, um, you know, let that drop out and produce erosion, you know, it's all agreeable, trying to do that situation better in terms of flooding, it's like. So this would be her, her very design, if, if, you know, we were awarded LCPC, it would be the document.
Okay.
Um, and on, we can get the kind of the basic form notes here, um, in the draft. You'll notice the first thing in the attachments from the layers, we drafted and until this part of the application, so we're really looking for town support. And the sign letters support, so they're actually, as you think they could change. Providing this letter, you know, you wanna make money, be, um, always be there, really looking for letters support attached to the application, and also, you know, I wanted to provide a, if you all see this draft, you can comment, question about it. The application is due July 7th, it's an online form, so I think we meet tonight, in weeks, if needed, I'm gonna upload it online, help attachments. That's in the timeline, and then towards the end, you see there's very tentative project schedule, you know, things obviously always change.
Yeah.
Um, and towards the end, you'll also see kind of, you know, an AR map of the area, and then kind of then design plans that were previously developed through a flood modeling effort, and SLR consulting, and they identified this project as an opportunity to, 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 to get flooded in the area. So, so the, the flood administration aspect, the most bridge, stating it. Just, just with the perimeter line, the estimate for cost is 44,000, the 40,000 of that is higher, you know, including the in-dering, surveying, flood modeling, I think the thing that goes along with 30% plan. And the other 4,000 is, um, private management, um, support by the best of the state, up in ancient Brandon.
Is there anything, is there, at this point, is there any unusual obligation for the?
No, so, there's no national fire for clean water service provider application. You know, if you, in the future, were going to need a bigger project, you know, and so your face, that's the, they're being fast more than they like on the seasonal mileage, but you just, you know, we would just be following your design, so I think it's fine.
Is this an extension of the, the recreation field?
Those would be a separate grant that can be applied for, um, it is part of that overall flood model.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they extended the flood model, you know, the water, all the way up, all the way from the water. You know, the road areas, and typical opportunities to get flooded, multiple, those are the ones that came up.
So the one we went and viewed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, we. Yeah. And so, for purposes of this application, we're looking for a letter of support.
Yeah, letters.
Personally, I would definitely support this, seeing, uh, Buffalo Bridge is one of my favorite offices. And the Haskett, the Bigger Cup.
Yeah, yeah, I think it missed that letter of support, probably like description, you know, the Bigger Cup, and then the previous step.
You know.
The bridge. And, you know, we, you know, our favorite spot is West Haskett, because I think we combined, looking at floodway restoration, and secondly, we bring it to a reasonable loss for production, I feel like it means. We would probably know by end of July, if it was funded or not. It would be, we see, you know, and, and for some reason, this particular, you know, program doesn't work out, and you don't get funding. There's other opportunities to fall, there's also a work program, which is the building, major structure, the apartment, for me, and so, throwing that up there as a plan B, in me. If they have any questions. You doing weird?
I'd again make, one of the first important things, but I would put yours, a letter of support.
Yes, so there is a letter here, and if, I'm do you, I'm, wanna make a motion that we send the letters for.
Send them to me. Send the letter of support from Ken Wilt, um, for the project application for the mountain tire shop. Correct.
Yes.
I'll second that. I'll second that one.
Any further discussion on that, any questions? No, all those in favor, aye, post, prepare. Thank you, thank you for your help, Megan, in this.
I'm gonna do it to me.
She can take it. And then. Sal, did you come here for, um, your contract?
Um, I, not specifically that I came to.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if you were waiting for that.
It looks good.
I did forget to put it on the agenda, but I, I added it to the amendments, um, we'll do that, Mr..
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so.
Oh, sure, you can miss, so, um, uh, Sal, Amy, and I are here to talk, we would have water, this is a different kind of water, you know. So, um, follow up on the last meeting's discussion related to the waste park project. About, really, things we want to talk to you about tonight, or if you have any final comments on the, um, literature engineering report that you shared at the last meeting, um, we also want to, uh, do, um, Do, um, preliminary draft, uh, the. Um, engineering service agreement between, it will be between, uh, stone and pound. Um, and would be attachment to the application for funding. Uh, for A and R that we talked about, um, and Sal will also, an update on L C P C's. Coordinator agreement, the health and time management, so, um. I have with me, um. Some excerpts of the stone agreement, and Amy will hopefully be one who answers questions that we have, but.
Yes.
Um, I have. Hard copies of the scope of work and the budget, I have one for each of you, um. And those of you who have looked at the full document.
Right, I, to move out, yeah.
Okay, great, uh, do, do you? Um, I also have two hard copies of it. Both seventy page documented, any of members want those? Limited ones, okay, yeah, great, and this was all seventy pages on. Um, and these are the excerpts that. Amy is likely to talk about, so give you that, so it's easier to find. Um.
These are the excerpts that goes with this?
Yes, what, those will be, um, kind of this, kind of a key scope of work, what. Stone will be doing is relative to the last, you thought probably the most. Um, no.
Is this for the hundred and twenty five thousand? Well.
Yes, so the hundred and twenty five thousand, um, of funds, which they are, um, the. Application you looked at. Last time, um, that, that's, read this relates to that. A draft, engineering service agreement needs to be attached to that, which is the draft E S A. Um, which also slipped into calling the E S As from state dollars, that's gonna happen. Um, is the basis of the budget used for that one hundred and twenty five thousand dollar application. Um, when we met in, uh, earlier this month. Um, we were aiming for, um, applying for that funding for this current fiscal year, keep the date after we learned. Yeah, A and R fully allocated their, uh, subsidy by support this fiscal year. Um, but two days after, they confirmed that those funds will be available again in the upcoming fiscal year, so. We're no longer wasting for June thirtieth deadline. But because those funds are where the first sort of, first, common first sort of basis, um, since the town's interested. Yeah, in line, in July, in early July.
So it's on the list for next year's round of funding.
You want to be first in line, yes, yep, um. And, uh, so that's why we're hoping to, um. Review this review tonight, um, and just affirm the, um, what's going on, as we see, we, we are eight. Uh, based on, on the strengths. You know, to me, it is.
There are, there are a few other things that, that we should say about the engineers and services agreement. Um, it will end up functioning both as, uh, enabling you to use the subsidy. And for anything that the subsidy can't cover, it can also be reimbursed using the ARBA grants. Um, one thing that is, is important to know about the subsidy is it takes. A long time to take it. And Emily was asking, uh, Emily Hackett from, uh, Modern Investment Vision, who is our, uh, bright person and also a reviewer of that engineering purposes agreement. Was asking me questions yesterday, and I haven't had a chance to answer yet about. Your face, our grant agreement, which makes me think she's getting close. Is at least looking, which is great. Um, and that means that we may have that grant agreement in hand. For, for long before, possibly, this subsidy becomes fully available. So whichever one comes in first, depending, depending on the speed at which you want to move. Will be able to take advantage of either of those funding vehicles to keep and have their own headache to spend, to advance the project.
Yeah, so it depends on what.
Having to spend any money to advance projects.
You mean like.
You would be able, you would be able to quickly get reimbursed for anything that you spend to accomplish another project. They're both reimbursement based vehicles, but once, one or the other is fully in hand. You can use that to do this. I think the only other thing I want to say is I always want to apologize to people when I have to give them this draft engineering services agreement. It is a long and cumbersome document with a lot of brand news from the agenda. It is the required form of agreement for anything that's using clean water state revolving funds, or. If you eventually decide to use a left or U S A role development fund, they will require the same form, I think, good engineer.
I tried to read it.
Which is, which implies that is, is a beautiful communicator and planner and extracted that actually really important parts for your consideration.
So is there any highlights in this, on the summary that? Need to point out or?
Or I was getting it on my computer and test. Um, so the, the short form part. The exhibit J, which is all the way to the end of the volume, the question of finding, is the specific scope of services that would be included in that. So that is finishing out environmental review, um, which is the last step to finish, step one, after the preliminary engineering report. So wetlands are haled to the, are haled to review, that sort of thing. Um, at the same time, advancing with, uh, what we call phase two in here, which is the rest of the preliminary engineering that would help you get ready for fossil. And those are the more needy things, like. Um, starting on survey, um. Doing, answering some of the big questions in terms of. Where components actually can go, making sure that costs are in line, um, and. Doing some of the next steps on understanding the capacity of the scope of field. And making sure that there aren't any conflicts between our proposed scope of field. And the nearby lots from the elementary school and the title of us, because it's right now, so. Um. Other than that, those are, those are the big huge things. And making sure that our cost estimates are solid enough that we can be confident in the amount of funding that we're asking. On a pretty accelerated schedule. We, the ARBA deadline for bond moves is August of twenty twenty four. But you probably are willing to want to do it before that. Because the deadlines start to pile up in the second half of twenty twenty four. But in a bond move in August, followed by final design and permitting by the end of the year, is incredibly aggressive. And, um, doesn't really give you enough time to advance design in getting your permits.
Besides, we're having, yeah, March twenty four, you're suggesting.
Sounds like, sounds like you might need a special town meeting, if, if you're gonna go for that.
Well, what that means is, we really need to communicate with the citizens, so let's be known. So back to this preliminary thing, um.
So this.
Two hundred and seventy five thousand plus thirty eight thousand. Is the estimate. Last two pages.
And I would say, in, in addition to this, we need draft scope of work and have new services agreement. One thing that will need to happen. Following submittal of the E S A and or the grant, uh, sorry, subsidy application, modern ask for that application. Um, this is our best, it's our best present determination of where. The state might come down on eligibility for costs. That's a process that I will need to go through finally. The amount could go up a little bit, it would probably go down, and the quadruple buckets that it's in growth fix. As we do now.
Right. Just give me an idea. So do you need a motion or anything, or you're just presenting? This is what you're presenting for the application, um?
I don't, I don't think, I think several, well, if there's not immediate questions on this, um, there is still. Regardless of whether we submit this version or an edited version following your input. With the clean water aspirant application, it will not provide a version. Um, we will be back for you after we get through that review with D E C, so there's plenty, they're still trying, you know. If you have questions or concerns or have specific elements of the scope or the budget, to please get in touch and let us know. And we're gonna, we'll address those, um, because we'll be doing the same thing with Emily at D E C.
Are you guys in need for a motion, and for the, for the resolution that lasts. Uh, two weeks ago, um, it's submitting. Uh, clean water while we found out patient, it is distracting actions. But there's not a motion to sign this draft, because he's probably to change it. You may have promised to change it, and before any money that lead to this is spent. Either through subsidy or the ARBA grant. You'll have an opportunity and need to make a final motion, but over several steps.
We just love to move forward, we stay evolving our own program.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's nice. It's what we agreed to.
What was the overall cost of doing this system?
Oh, you have to stretch it, well, I asked.
Same as, uh, what copy?
And.
I, 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 all this.
It's about five million.
Both project costs, I think, was. It depends on which.
Yeah.
We're engineering to alternate three, but building alternative two, I think that cost was, of those, three and four.
Um, alternative two is without three million, so nine seventy five thousand.
And what was going to be the cost for maintenance?
I believe in the O N M's cost estimate that we have in the preliminary engineering report is on the order of fifty thousand a year.
The operator during all, yeah, with all that and the sampling, yes.
Operator.
Is that what O N M means?
Yes.
Over the pump station.
Yep, that sounds about right.
O N M cost for the.
Two will be low.
Yeah, forty eight thousand. I'll make you, I'll have Linda make your copy of this.
If somebody who owns, who's going to serve this.
That's only, um, same thing, and it will see side.
Seventy five.
Considering mound systems thirty to forty grand by seventy five. That's. Gonna be pretty much close. Wait, you math that all that.
That's if it's required.
Actually, all of them, does it, after thirty years? Your mound system will flood?
Cause the. It's required to put in a mound system.
It prob, it probably doesn't have to, cause I don't see the state giving you a, a direct discharge permit. You're not gonna get that out of the state, not with that litter shed you're on. The phosphorus mentioned, you're not gonna get that. You're gonna have to do probably.
Even, even if you try to get the state to, to, for the indirect strange, yes, um, it was. In law, in law. We've asked, we've asked that question for another, um, village waste park to be, it's happening, but they're. And the state was kind of. You know, they tied it to all this, we don't do that, but here's a really dusty process and luck, and they probably isn't.
The problem is where, eh, their call doesn't end up in the. Back in the champ, the last champion.
Mm-hmm.
Phosphorus, eh, phosphorus T M D L, yeah. And since it's such high up, it's more source, clean water. It's much more strict your limits.
It's. I don't know if this is worth, I mean, but this is also a complete design, correct, or does that?
Yeah, and he's saying other than the indirect discharge wells, the larger scale, it's more, you'd have to basically. Build your primary replacement capacity at the same time. Um, the technology that we're, that we included. It's, if you were doing conventional trench, you would load one, one set of trenches one year. And then the next, the other set of trenches the following year. Um, the drip disposal is more, what they're, what they're, what the state is landing on is. Because it makes less sense to do this on those for a year, and then like rest, it doesn't work as well. So they're saying just a whole thing that have. Which is basically the same.
So, if, if you're thinking of it in terms of. comparable swimming on sets, because this. Building mound, really another.
Yes.
Uh, the same sentence.
You tank, you filter, you tank, they throw a filter on there, then that goes to your mound. Effectively.
Yes.
Pretty plus.
It's just with the drip technology that loves it. What I saw from a tree shows is, it's got the advantage of, when you gotta move a mound system, you can go put in a forest around trees and all that shit if you gotta move it. Without having to dig everything up.
It's very plus.
And so, I don't know if you would like me to just use some, I mean, so long, right, this, it is gonna be pretty confusing, um, how everything works, but, um. So Amy did talk about what the work is still videoing, and part of that, what L C P C role in this will be. Uh, engaging with really, you know, on that very relatively tight timeline to ensure that. As much education on the topic can be done, um, to go along with that, we are. By this, I am, looking at, uh, developing a, hopefully a relatively easy, uh, load chart, so that. The select board here and any resident that, uh, would like to be coming, gave the topic can see how the process goes from start to finish. Um. So, um, I hope to have that ready soon, um, we're also going to be, see my notes out here, uh, obviously, we're managing the grant. Uh, will be assisted with the ordinance, ordinance policy development, and then ensuring, uh. In terms of bond preparation, such, for example, like, ensuring the one meetings appropriately, um, and things of that nature will be assisted in that.
Wonderful.
So we're trying to take all the work.
Yeah, and I think the, uh, the public engagement, uh, aspect of this is extremely important. But it's, it, be- because, uh, the population related, that is directly being served, is small and concentrated. But in fact, it's a benefit to the entire town and to the, the economics of the year. Um, and I. So I think that outreach is extremely important, because. Those that don't live right down here, um, tend to not be. Pretty much here, they do know it's here, but, you know, it's, it's not part of their everyday. And so outreach is gonna be extremely.
Yeah, um, I've begun brainstorming with other staff from L C P C on ways to engage. The people who live, uh, outside of the village area, and I think we have already a pretty good shortage of ideas coming along, and. Uh, I've done community outreach, such as the Ford, um, in the city of South Atlanta, so it's not my first time, uh, working on it. And people engage. And people engaged, that's longer than what it means.
Good.
So one of the things though, I think that, you know, I think citizens are, you're gonna have, get into the weeds. And it seems like the, um. Waste water committee really needs to meet and make some firm decisions, cause. They're gonna wanna know, you know, it's the whole town thing that there's or. Adjust the residents and, and things like that, and, um. If you say, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, they're not gonna be into. Voting positive for.
That and the other selling point probably ought to be, should be also is if you ever want to sell your house. You need to have a septic system that works. If yours, no, you can't put one in and you can't sell your house. Might as well just burn it down, cause you're gonna. It's a bonus. Well, as your house lose, best is not to paint a butt.
Uh, beautiful across the road from me. Unless you ask for matches, kids, friendly.
Do you have anything more for us? So other than, um, we're gonna put the buyout. When you're finished with this.
I think this has received, um, good, pretty well for, for wastewater.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We are, we are getting back the preliminary entry for that at the end of the month. So if you do have any comments or, or feedback for us that you'd like us to incorporate. Please let us know, um, ideally this week, so that we have the probability to. Make any changes and, and.
I didn't see anything else. Okay, do you wanna talk about this, um?
Yes, the potential buyout, so, um, again, move the water. Um, so. Few years ago, a property owner on Woker Road. Which, um, the agency of natural resources, let's get this in the town. Um, about a lot, uh, between. Woker, uh, Woker Road and the Wild Ranch that had, um, used to, uh, have a. A little on, on the level, uh, was removed. Um, part due to flood concerns, part due to drinking water concerns. Um, and that, they probably, they're still pursuing a, uh, buyout of the property. Um, at that time, it was not eligible for a few of buyouts, um, for a variety of reasons. Um, that will make me feel more afraid making markers. Um, but the, um. Uh, my emergency management currently has a pot of state park of funds that can be used for, um, buyouts. In circumstances, uh, like this. Um, so the property owner had reached out to all of us again, uh, about a month ago. Um, we confirmed that, uh, this property may be eligible for this state, uh, pot of money, which is called the original community's fund. Um, there's not a local match, uh, so our program will fund up to. A raised value, um, as well as closing costs, um, in the new vegetation or sand restoration costs that are needed. Um, I think the site is mostly empty, but it's probably a good idea to, you know. If, if there is any sand restoration needed to get back to re-space, you definitely have access to the funds. Um, it's not a local match, uh, but the application does need to come from the town. Uh, and it comes from holding property with a protective easements, uh, after the buyout. Um, so, um, prior to doing anything. You know, to, in terms of the town would be interested in submitting an application. Uh, for this program, um, in, if you have any questions.
Is this property in the, is it, is part of the third plane, uh, project that?
Well.
It's outside.
It's between that where the north, the old North Woker Church was, you know where that was? And the barn going on.
That one lot.
It's little, that little split. It was, I, um, I forget. Yeah, Tammy, something.
And it is eligible. Yeah, it's literally no cost to return than the application. Which must be very similar to the application that we've done in the man house. Uh, there were several buyouts in the land that area. It's the same plan.
I think it. Um, if you're hoping to operate an application, make them prepare. And to the town for state insurance, which we will. Oh, sorry, if, um, if the select board is, you know, willing to operate the application, we can prepare and. Provide on the application that is supporting the cost, so we ensure it's ready.
Put the motion. Second. Discussion. Those in favor? Close, so Carrie. Thank you for doing that, so you will reach out though to him while it's going through. Okay. While we're at it, um. Matters to the agenda, um. It's just a typical agreement for local project manager services for Sal or L C P C. Sal will be the point person. To administer the municipal planning grant to the schoolhouse, there's no additional. Cost to the town, but it was, um. It's, it's part of the grant when we wrote it, but it's just been an agreement, L C P C, formal agreement, um. So I just need, um. A motion to approve my signing. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Close? So Carrie.
I thought you were just going to look for free.
It's almost free.
Almost.
Yeah, almost.
Right, we're gonna move on to the treasurer's report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you everyone so much for.
Yeah, okay. Sam, version?
Hmm.
Who was that?
Who's the next meeting?
Uh, July, July Nelson will have the final report to me, um, next week. Yeah, and then, you know, talking more. Sorry, I have to cancel people. Thank you, everyone.
Nothing going on. Okay, moving to the.
Okay, so I handed out, um, last meeting, we talked, uh, about the profit and loss for the town and for. The transfer station, and if you quickly look at the transfer station. I'm pretty sure, it's starting to look very well, there's only one question I have is. Um, do you want us before the end of June to pay back the whole loan that the town made to us? Or should we just keep doing the five hundred each month? I know it's looking better, but. You know, I think the summer will be very good. I just don't want us to get into the same situation we did last time. So if it's okay with the select board, I recommend we keep doing the five hundred each month. But if you wanted the, um, transfer station to pay back to town, we could do that at this point.
She wants to know whether, uh, because the transfer station's doing a little bit better. Uh, does the select board want? Uh, to pay off the loan that the town made? For now, or do you, uh, is it all right to just continue with payments?
Each month five hundred.
There's obviously you, Chris, everything.
Um, how much do we owe?
I'm sorry, what?
How much do we owe?
Um, well, we paid back a thousand when we owe two, um, but we do have enough in there to pay the two back at this point. And still pay our bills.
I, I think we should just make the asses, I don't.
That'll give us a little.
So one, I, it doesn't.
So keep doing the, what we've been doing.
And whatever.
Just. Yeah, to. Five hundred a month. Be done by September. Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, so, um, I gave you the fund balance, um, we're doing quite well, we are using up, um, our. Fuel costs that we, um, I'm so sorry about the dogs, um. That we set aside, so far we've used seventeen of that, but we'll have twenty-two going into the new year. In case, um, you know, we do overrun again. So I just wanted to, um. Tell you about that and the office equipment, we are going to buy a file cabinet, um, hopefully soon for the zoning that we need. Um, other than that, there are no more expenditures that I think will be for this year. So this fund balance is, um, looking like what it will look like for the year end. The next thing is on page six of the profit and loss. There is only, when we talk about fund balances, there's only one category I can see. Considering some departments went over, there are some departments under, and I think it will kind of offset each other, those departments. But in one department particularly, which is the select board. In the town, uh, um, select board manager, I'm sorry, I gave it the wrong name. Um, there is nineteen thousand left, and I know at this point we are about twenty-three to twenty thousand short on our equipment fund. My recommendation is that we take that nineteen thousand. Uh, we'll have a little bit more to pay Kurt, but the eight hundred eighty-one should cover him. The nineteen thousand and set it in the fund balance and allocate it for. The equipment fund, which we know will be running a little short shortly.
The possible news overage is coming from the project manager's budget, right? Or underage is coming from the project manager's budget. And we know that we have shortfall. Um, you know, lease payments coming up. Yeah, so it's about nineteen thousand. The shortfall is about twenty-five thousand.
So we'll be able to cover a little bit of that, and I think, um, we might be able to. Come up with it in other areas or even from the fund balance after the auditors audit us.
I think it's a great idea, cause I don't know where we're gonna get it. Um, why does we have to go into the fund balance? Can we just go into the given fund or, uh? We need to wait till the auditors, um?
No, you can do it now, because obviously it's not spent and it's up to the select board's discretion at this point. To take any funds in the current balance that they want to set aside for a future, um. Source of income for, uh, a certain project or like equipment. And, um. I'm sure when the auditors come, there will be at least that amount. After they take into consideration, you've moved this over, there'll probably be even more of the fund balance, which every year we usually use a little bit towards the taxes. So that is, um, they are going to be coming in late August this year, so we'll know a little sooner. Do I'm budgeting it?
I just like, we're gonna have a lot left over, I think. Where's a lot of two downs, trying to even out, but I think the nineteen thousand is pretty obvious, uh. So I'll make a motion to transfer the. Nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, um, from the select board's. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget into the, um. Equipment fund.
Linda, can I ask you to just make it the nineteen, because I still gotta pay Kurt one more time?
Nineteen thousand?
Even. That's okay.
But you think it, that's. There's one more.
It's pay, um.
Payroll, and I don't know how much it will be, so I just.
It's gonna be much, I'll tell you that.
Right. So I'll make a motion to transfer nineteen thousand dollars from the ending balance of. Select board's department. From the twenty-two, twenty-three budget into the equipment account.
Second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Close?
So Carrie.
Thank you guys, good night.
Bye.
Was that good, Ben?
Uh, there's Daryl. Or I couldn't.
No, I'm not, it could be because of fans, could it be?
No, I think it's her microphone.
She had it checked. This way.
She's probably on an iPad.
She is, I'm listening to her through my phone as well, and, but she's okay. So that's why I don't know if it's the speaker.
No, I think it's.
There's a video of that, it's like those dubbed movies and dubbed in. My ears not what they used to be, I did, yeah.
It looks like putting a lot of my two little.
So we'll move on to the project managers' report.
All right, so, uh, last time we talked about works that were only. And, um, issue of it from basic we sees. Um, so it took, uh. Some of the, the, the tactics and everything, posted it on the website. Everyone who's had a chance to see it.
The what?
The basis. Including photographs of it. Um, and we did some, did some research on it, issue. Um, this is a, these particular plans are not new to the area. Think you're. Wait some time. Um, so what we want to focus on with the website communicating is make. Um, public aware that website ditching the soil, you may not wanna use it. Cause it will spread. And secondly, the moly will spread, as it always happens. And, uh, unfortunately, we cannot, um, change the date of moly. Because it forces to the second. So we just kind of did a public awareness thing. And, uh, if you have a chance to read it, we've got any comments up in there.
Okay, great, thanks.
Secondly, um, we did receive the New York Woker and Gophers. Um, study results. Um, and there is a copy in your packet of each one of those. Um, my suggestion is, and this can be a private, uh, it's very easy to read. There was, uh. Three, uh, locations along the roads where the meters were placed. And it did measure the speed of the vehicle. And what we found, or what the study found on the Gulf Road, is that traffic was relatively light. The thing that really jumped out is that speed and the, and how speed limits are determined from road studies. And it's done, this is all based on national studies of speed on roads. And it comes down to the eighty-five percent. So the green big here here, in comparison to speedway, is where it says eighty-five percent. So the speed limit on the Gulf Road is thirty-five miles per hour. The eighty-five percent count is forty-three. Now, that, in fact, we could justify changing speed to thirty-five. I don't want to do that, but that's.
Those are possibilities.
The way it works. That is, that's the way it works. And as far as the majority of the traffic is passenger traffic, seemingly in a truck and heavy-weight vehicles, tractor trailers. When you boil it all down, it might be one or two of these. Going to the street. Now, I think.
Now, when, when they stop doing.
It's telling on the top.
June twelfth.
I had noticed likely that some of those huge, huge real hopper trucks. No, like the bauer, railway cars, except for you know, when a forty, forty-eight foot, and heavy knows can get out through.
Well, this is.
There is a survey study here, which is North Oak Road. And North Oak Road, again, the posted speed limit there in some areas is fifty miles an hour. Eighty-five percent that was eighty, was fifty-five miles per hour. And in areas where the speed limit is forty miles per hour, eighty-five percent that was fifty miles per hour. If you justify.
So this here, south of Wet Rose, Brassbury. The first one is next to the brass tree, and the speed limit is fifty.
Yeah, but it's on this side.
Only five hundred feet. I mean, I don't think you're into walking yet, are you?
I think so, yeah.
Just barely.
Just barely, yeah. Just barely.
Wet Rose, you know, where that is.
The volume is a little shocking. So thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-eight vehicles in one year. That's pretty heavy traffic. Yeah. As far as heavyweight vehicles go, it's about two point four percent. If you do a little math on that, you'll come up with like three trucks a day. Two to three trucks.
Last two weeks.
Well, I think a lot of those trucks is the guy who was on the North Oak Road. And he parked the MBI trailer up above by the building. Building there, he was parking it down by it. So why are you parking for the route?
Is that trouble or something?
Well, I don't know if he is, but I've seen it in his house. I don't know if he, he doesn't, it's not his truck.
No, it's MBI trailer. He parks either by by the culvert. I don't know who it is, but do you see that culvert?
It's a.
I think it's. Get the trash, if you're asking. It's trash comes and goes. Think I've been drinking. Yeah.
Go get a towel and some sun.
Yeah, but it's not his truck. Seen it on his lawn. But I've been told it's mine, yes.
No, he probably brings him home, parks it and takes it.
So. So I think the question we have to ask ourselves is, to me, the heavy traffic, the traffic for a channel seems low because it seems. I've seen that many times. But the question is, do we want to entertain looking into any warnings that close roads through back to trailer? And everything comes at a price first. And unfortunately, BLTC does not have a template for this kind of ordinance. However, BLTC has informed, yes, this is an ordinance that can be replied. Being in order to be, either special meeting with accounting, need player account weighing in.
Totally, if you get a petition, well. We can do the warrants, but there's some petitions we have to help.
The since there isn't an open one, my thought is that we would have to draft an ordinance from scratch, which would probably need some legal fees to account to make sure it's all solid. And secondly, we would have to fund, I'm saying, preferably leaderboards line, group of key. And leaderboards would be sixty.
So I would imagine that some towns might have an ordinance, if BLTC doesn't, I mean. You don't think Burlington doesn't?
Same, I said, no, true.
Have a Scrasper field about there and.
Well, in the impression visitors, several ones, again, were very positive. I wanted to present this to this board and see what your reading is on it and then present a grass berry. What do you think? I'm just, I'm really disappointed in this. Just can't believe, so, no, I can't either.
I think, if we could see the Crasbers came up, see if it's any different.
They can't remember their numbers, yeah. But the, the big parts are really concerned about, we're gonna get transferred. It's all screwed, right? You know, women, you're
not stopping for an aim, there's no longer anything for them to stop for. Beats the hell out of the road.
Yeah. So.
What's a single unit truck? What is that?
That means it has, you know, the number of wheels, it's one X, one rear X. So they're talking twenty-four foot box and smaller.
Some of them have got it.
A small.
It's a truck.
So it's another issue. It's not a tracking.
I'd be interested in seeing if Crasper would do a traffic study and see how theirs comes out. Because I agree with you, I've probably seen every one of those trucks.
I've heard of it. That's my house that's really always for the road. Why am I hearing the dog's?
Get out there for.
We should. We'll watch your eyes.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Yeah.
I could have been.
Let's do a cam, let's do, let's do a camera on front.
I think the only thing that bothers me is the speed limit that they're giving out.
Well, whenever I've gone, most of the speed limit, there's always somebody on my tail.
Sorry, someone passing or tilting, you want to go through the basket.
Running down fourteen area.
Every day. You push it, push it, push it.
You try to push it, I just.
But it doesn't mean we have to choose a speed limit. It just means that if somebody really wanted to challenge the speed limit, they could based on the same practice.
That speed limit though is done by some engineer.
It's the engineer depending on the condition they share with the owner.
So we, we did step those. All those last three roads, dirt roads, we just stepped them. But not the one on the road, we had to study them.
I'm just saying. The big, the big quote from some of the residents of the road is speed limit creeped in lower. But then back to the other.
I, I need to wear it. I mean, once you get by the transfer station, I'm telling you, it's wondering a lot of people don't get hit.
Yeah.
Start to pull out, you know, I think the figures we are supporting are singing.
Definitely.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to see that one, please.
So the next step is I'm gonna go contact Crasper and see if there are roads that we can open there. And tonight, I just wanted to open up to anything about this, because stats. So as far as so we've been talking at length about parking for the rail trail etc. My understanding was our conclusion and what was written to
Jackie.
Jackie. Is that, when we investigated the land over here, it looks like a challenge. It's wetland. It is very uneven, require an arse and fill. And so they went over and looked at the parking, or the area next to the rec field, baseball field, which is old land. Real busy life. It's deep out. And that might be the assumption for parking. But what we needed to get Jackie is, they wanted to go through a winter and see how things is. And they had a lot of the door open, although the other leasing was slated there. So the second thing that we wanted to look at with this, with railroad street is that it's not wetting. Because there's no place to put snow, snowy. I was right up the rail trail, that's the last thing everybody wants. So I went, proposed to Jackie, that initially, we'll flip in leasing fifteen feet the front inch. And she responded that, you know, that's fine, that's great. But I don't think we need lease to be there. What we can do is even do an access permit. And with that access permit, we can go down this street and do whatever we want. Because for her perspective, he wants, first of all, for not to be snowing. And secondly, it, it reaches to you, you can view the.
Yeah, it's my concern, nobody.
Yeah. So she is very, very supportive of it. Put me in touch with a number of colleagues that could write the something first. It doesn't restrict us on leasing that land that you want to there. The web does, the business is, almost no obligation access.
What's the problem?
Just do it. And there's press involved in that as well. And that is a clearing fifteen feet of land. I don't know that that's gonna cost, but it would be the town's cost. We're gonna have to get somebody that has the right kind of machinery that goes in there and is noticing that, a tree.
The thing is to create.
Yeah.
You have to have some solid chicken.
That was big decisions.
Yeah, hope so.
And humor fails.
The highway department can do some of that. I don't think it should be judicial cost.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes.
Really?
I mean.
They're gonna do a.
But I know.
How hard is it for them to take the bucket holder? Put the bucket at an angle and go about a foot above and just push the trees back? I mean, those trees can be very well rooted in that wet soil.
Yeah. Well, that's, yeah, that's.
I mean, of course, of course, you could always ask some of the town people to come in and saws and make them organize. It's bad.
Sounds like rude.
Tomlines has changed though.
My liability is tighter. That's what you're getting, that's.
Sign up and get a piece of paper.
So when they were talking to her about leasing some of the land and then the construction of it, were there any requirements on it in terms of we had to do anything? Can we lease it and just hold it the way it is? Well, that's what Dad said, why don't we just lease the whole thing? It's ours to do what we want.
Kind of, but there's a liability in that.
Well.
Once we've done the leasing, if someone. If the trees fall down, cross the road. We need to clean that up. We have to kind of.
Right, but it doesn't matter.
It gets hurt.
No, it doesn't. The, the etiquette on the, on the rail trail thing is they just come in and do it for every, all along.
People's got money, put it back eight feet. So I don't see unless it's a big tree.
Well, I clarify that. So yes, we can do it, we can lease it, hopefully.
Well, I'm not standing a decision now, but that's just in debate because we didn't know where to put the portal.
Well, I that's next on the list. So the portal is where right now I put the guidance out there that the portal that goes. And it's the place that we looked at and said, this is where we. Now, we see the. It's on, it's on this fifteen foot. And when we look out and look at the flags, these are little flags that just maybe got off. The, the flags are posted right next to the road, it's not just gonna get stuck in that. There was so much vegetation that I couldn't even see the flags.
Oh, you don't want it next to the barber tree and say anything about it?
And it's not, kind of a little more than halfway up the.
Were you able to get a portal?
I have not.
Well, Colton. Colton, I've only tried to get one, and there don't have any. But if you call them, they'll she was able to get one from out of Glover. They, they recommended place of love, because I know the ones down south want more money. Now, maybe Colton's has some where we're gonna have it long term. And she's just setting it for a weekend, so that might be a different story too. And once that comes in, then the person for the rail trail will do what Jackie know. Again. Trails.
Right. Right, if you just look at the logistics of the product is we can get this access permit done quickly. Have a clear road crew over there, like, then it's fifteen feet around where the portal that goes. Clear that, uh, all the way, like, get rid of the smokes and everything. So the portal that is a place to sit. And then we have to go to the people who live try to aid all this time, nature.
That stuff's a lot less thick than some of the roadside stuff they have to deal with. The roadside stuff's a lot worse than the land they have to clear.
Next thing, the safety grant. We did get the application in for the safety grant.
Great.
There'll be a decision on that in early July. We applied for ten thousand dollars. The grant is quite focused. And that really is percentage that relates to. And that really is for signage, uh, that relates to. Flushing. So any sign, uh, Chevron sign, apparel sign, around the curb. Uh, the relinquator signs, like the one this year in both bridge. Um. Purvey signs.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, those are the ones that help. So at first I thought this was much broader than that, we could get speed signs. We could refresh, uh, you know, some of the signs that are shot and built road. And, uh, it really focuses down to. These flushing signs. So we went around and identified where we really think the, the worst areas are. Uh, this does include right away, um. Of those. And, uh, yeah, ten thousand dollars. So I'll leave it at that.
You want to do anything for the North Walker Road, the paving?
Uh, for North Walker Road, yeah, there is, uh, yes, you're right, there's a. There is one option that we did apply for this option, and that is to put, uh. Signage, uh, painted sign on road. With a stop ahead, a warning from North Walker, and then through fifteen. And to put the, the stop bars. So if you're gonna go right, there's your stop there, you're gonna go that, there's your stop. You know, you come around the corner. You don't go over somebody's stop there.
Yeah, it used to be there, you know, when we first got our safety rest, every year it would put them on.
Because what happens now is people coming from North Walker. And it's, it's open, there's nothing coming your way, so they cut in. And tighten the stick, you know?
They don't fit down to the opening.
Yeah, so they don't have to slow down at least.
Well, it's kind of fun growing hair, but.
When they're shooting up the time on the south.
Which is very expensive. We use heavy steel bridle. Some of them will reach the shade and eliminate the shooter. But it's, it's all our natural storage. Yes, of course.
The website developer, I live in there, you're meeting with Bradley tomorrow. We had, uh, some interesting setbacks with both, and all got resolved. Um, and so we think to rid it, get that up and moving. So we're gonna go over some details tomorrow, and some. Changes to the contract, the original contract called for, uh. The initial development period and the two years of support. We eliminated the two years of support. Uh, just because we'd rather see the results, it would be a relationship, everything. Uh, and then we, you know, we'll, we'll. Uh, and, uh, Lamont County Way to this burden is, um. I'm going to visit. The transfer station, um, Sarah, she believes in me.
Well, I believe.
Yeah, uh, and she's the allocation person for the. She's gonna come out and spend the Saturday morning there, um. Meeting with the public, trying to, which makes it a whole, it's not recycled.
Yeah, yeah, for years.
Yeah.
A lot of that for years.
Uh, so this will be in twenty eight, but July. Uh, if that just so happens to be the day that Sylvia is on. And so the transfer station will be run by the member that I'm there, and I'm there.
Ladies Day. Try to be there.
Um, and the last few things I might bring up, but, uh. Dean asked me to just throw this out there to the board. Uh, there's been a lot of complaints for many years with the community and private lady regarding Ben the Bull. Um, upon, uh, North Walker Road.
Ben the Bull.
Ben the Bull, huh?
Oh.
Ben, Ben.
Oh.
The bull's name is Ben.
Oh.
Uh, and this is, uh, I, North Walker Road, it's, it's the ball, it's even tied. Tied up there. Uh, and it really become a part of the restoration. And Dean has, um. Spoken with the owner multiple times, and the owner is willing to give up the ball. Um, and Dean also coming to sanctuary, willing to take the ball. But two things happen, they can call. One is it has to be pissed.
The ball is still.
Yeah. Or they won't pay for it, uh. And the other is it has some, the growth of the tune. And that has to be moved with a payback. So Dean's proposal is that we go and get the best pool and get him this two things. And as he goes out and visits the, the fundraiser. They will, so he would personally take the ball and into this sanctuary.
So it'll only be fixed in the vault. No, we wouldn't then with. With that, oh, never mind.
Uh, so anyway, that's just FYI, and it's in Dean's hands. Um, I really appreciate Dean's work.
Oh, yeah, that's nice movement.
That's tough. But apparently the doorways, twelve hundred.
Yeah, it's a good stuff.
Um, and the other thing is that we gotta mention from a, um. A citizen regarding the local signs. Uh, we could, uh, walk into the local signs. And they're asking for the town to pay attention to them, perhaps do a refresh.
Once we just put up. I'll allow them to, sorry, I was thinking of them. Please, you book it for me. Yeah, it's been on my mind, uh, to put, have bought, take a look, because it's been a couple of years. They, they need.
Yeah.
Well, Tom and I both.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are on private land, but I got permission. From the Men and Arts, from Tom Minaj.
Yeah.
They're out of the regular.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that isn't an access, but, yeah.
They have to continue.
They remind us, please.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be very shocking, quote. Sure, that's gonna be a very large expense.
Mr. Kas, can I know?
Well, not so bad, you know, wow, that really is gonna be outrageous. I mean, I, I don't wish, I wish the ball would ever like that it's not there. I mean, they transport them out of there, how many trucks they got, I mean.
Thirteen years old.
So long from their last.
Fifteen, twenty.
They used to be for food. It's not the issue?
No, it's not the issue.
Argent was that ending. I have a hard, hard time taking care of the normally.
Over there, right, because three sides.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, he was out, as that barn was over there, that little barn thing was there.
But the, the shed is also metal. And in the summertime.
Not, not.
And it, the, the ball has no shape.
There's, there's no excuse for that.
So winter, summer, it's, it's in red, it, the animal, it never be fighting with the water. Which is the plan.
I'm surprised, and the state law is never being fixed in the field.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. All right, so that's it for me.
Oh, you have on the long term, this green burial?
Yeah.
What's happening or going on for that, where, you know?
Um, it really, it's, it's a ready up policy, green burial policy for the town. Um, and the policy would be based on state statute. Um, there've been several big violations with.
I've had two people call and ask.
Oh, okay.
What are we going to do because it's going to be within the next few months?
Yeah.
There's a person.
Uh, we can certainly get the. The policy that gets important to look at, I think. To prove that we are there. It's, it's not importance. Just kind of policy. Or so does it, when it hasn't, that's part of it. I, uh. There's a lot of other things going on, like, they could run the background, but. If that news, we can face over. Don't have something, maybe.
And just for updates, I mean, I need to help the man who's, the company that's doing our E nine one one signs. Apologizing that he's just been really frustrated trying to get the materials, but they finally came. Um, and the post should be coming in a week or two. So, um, anyway, they're getting right on it. I sent him a lot of his numbers and he asked for more, so.
Okay.
Just have been waiting for the materials to come in.
Well, um, we've got, uh. One of the, due to this, um. There's some tools available to, they put in, pull straight, and, and now the property. When I was in any pool, well. The basically you have in the garage, it's a wonderful thing. Um, and exactly being effective, over this large a number of sunnies. Uh, we can rent a, uh, recompressor version of that, where you just put it on top. It is, he drives a thing, and put up the sign. Sorry. But first he wants to try to manage that like this, he said, he said, too.
Where is the highway department up to these things? Highway Department.
Well, they're, uh. So the start of the road segments go, uh, Rob has identified the road segments and. Uh, Dylan's got to choose the projects, that has to be submitted, uh, through Rob. And Rob doesn't do anything very, just submitted and approved. Um, so they've been doing, um. I think you're saying. Um, cover installations. And, uh, burnable has been, they, they. They've not done that, you may not have done the mowing this.
Mowing was a lot of big, didn't we, um, the central area, yeah, yeah. All right, appointment of the health officer, deputy officer. Be table this evening.
Yeah, so I guess it is what it is, um. The burner, uh, they continue to invite the deputy officer. Uh, I have started to work with burner more closely, um, I. They've got a, a trial run, you know, uh, where there was an issue of a lorry bill that's been there for, we need to. Um, and I think burner was just stuck. Um, so. And I, we did a conference call with burner and Ryan from the state, same building, I remember earlier. Uh, Ryan, you know, gave us the same, same line in the research. He gave us the same response as he's done before, which he's done, doesn't have to. Um, and that's what the process is with it. We, the town, you know, forces. We try to give her opportunity to use the transfer station on credit, um. We try to help her out in any way we can, and we're all back on it, just, just going.
So there's more damage made.
Yeah, the garbage person is like, oh, can't have a property, it's, uh, house has been on build, we didn't like the base.
Ball like trash, dude, the knees and burn them.
I mean, believe me, it's staying, so. So we can try to go down, condemn the property route. I think the state will resist that, giving them the housing issues, but we try. Uh, it's a lot of work, a lot of paperwork, and the paperwork's not done. The other is the running. But all referring, we would refer it to this legal. And the legal department will start to get on, to kind of get it out of our. But he hasn't done that before, for, in two years. And from the conversation, we probably, he's probably not gonna do it. So. My thought is where people are learning is to, um, get a hold of our legislators, sort of. Which really.
Don't we have the ordinance?
Orness. Well, sure, it's a celebration.
But aren't there lines on England? What's the center having an ordinance, so we don't release?
Well, we have a picture. He's been taking it free.
She has, where, do you have their reports?
Well. They got. They got the second report, and they're gonna respond to it. She. Don't be shy. I mean, my frustrations may have been there, because I have that, that, several people, why didn't they move? You know, we can spend all our time writing our things.
Well, she applies for property tax relief with the state. So the state's paying the property taxes, right?
Yeah, states.
And so, I mean. That would be both sounds.
It's a.
So, yeah. But I mean, yeah, there are children there, so.
Really?
Yes. So, you can't make her homeless.
Well, DCF might step in and make her childless. Which has got that awful mess there.
But I don't see why we keep having ordinances that we have years, what's. What, what are they for? I don't think the court system is effective. Uh, the court meets once a month. And moves very slowly, and from, uh. Court opinions that I've read. The judge just seems to be some sort of an arbitrator and sends, you know, sends a bat to the town and says, trying to work it out, come up with a plan. And there's, I don't see enforcement on the court law.
Yes, well, I think what we can do is the next one, we'll write a meeting. And we will have this record here, we're involved, follow up since we've been watching.
Well, maybe it's time to get a lawyer, then.
Time to get a legislator.
But what a night. In, really, legislators are not gonna meet until the fall, they can maybe put a bill in. It goes to a committee, and then the committee chair decides whether it's interest or not. Everything's hardly decided about what's gonna happen in the legislature.
No, it's not, but my thought with getting the legislature is. Uh, this is the Department of, uh, Environmental, this is a department, right?
Right. Also, not.
Public legislator, call, they will charge it, whoever's in charge of that department can say, hey. What's going on?
Well, that sounds like what I do.
I don't want, there's nothing with a bill, or anything, that's, it's gonna be, you know. And, I mean, refreshing, kicking.
Well, that almost like, that, I don't know, man. Well, that sounds like the idea to me. Can we try that and if if you don't get any response within one month, um, bring it back to us and go to step two?
Yeah.
Hardly also depends on since they all work from home now, so when they get to answering back, depends on their time. Like most things now.
It's a good year of this guy for a year and a half.
But he had the time to go up there to James Clark.
Which.
He had the time to do that one.
Which maybe I couldn't believe.
Right.
I couldn't have believed. That was, he did that.
Because you're nice.
Well, maybe I don't need my. Man, I'm just not qualified. He does not.
Uh, I mean, I was surprised he was up, you know.
Well, shocked.
Two days.
Now it's two days that I, he had, oh, I mean, hey. Hey, I'm no time. He don't really, this is that one body with a fire on his ass to get him out, it's funny. But let's get his boss anyway. If the legislature pushes it forward. They're gonna hate us.
Yeah, but if if he doesn't, we don't care.
We care, right?
You know. Long's been from the new supervisor, he does nothing, no one.
Yeah.
Too sad.
Keep going.
Something's not, you raise the voice, and there's trouble, and they're gonna scream, but you'll get them solved, so. Apparently everything right is basically. I'm gonna stay like, whatever. Hold on a second here.
Alright, so we invited Quinn Bernard as the health officer and you as the deputy. I'll make that motion.
I'll send you that motion card, okay?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. So care, give you that. No. I think no one is that. It's the office and everything. Going on to the forest committee, we have vacancy on there, Gwen. Matters, I was saying. Um, so. Sheila Halpin on Wells Road sent me an email, um, a letter. Saying that, um, I heard there might be an opening for the community forest committee, I'd like to be considered for that committee. Retired from my position at. Hardwood Elementary School and have been looking for ways to become more involved in the local community. I've attended a few forest, town forest meetings as well. As some of their locks in the forest, I believe I would be a good fit for this committee. My spouse and I live on seventy five acres of mostly forested land in North Woket. We are enrolled in the current use program and work with a consulting forester on our forest management plan. I'm familiar with strategies for managing forests in a sustainable fashion. I'm excited and feel the town forest will prove to be a great resource for the people of Woket. There will be opportunities for recreation and education for people of all ages. In addition, as importantly, in my opinion, preserving a large tract of publicly owned undeveloped land. Will be invaluable now and for future generations, please consider me um for the opening.
Sure, he hasn't.
Sheila Halpin.
Halper?
Halpin, H I N. Was on Wells Road here, um, the old Wells Park, wasn't it? Yeah. She was a teacher.
So how do we deal with this?
A teacher in that hard work for years.
Sounds like a, yeah, for the, a ticket with Janet.
So we were supposed to. Went on to the forest committee.
Right, right.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Work that out, whatever they all, I'm sorry, those things.
What was in favor?
Aye.
Close. So care. Tom, representing to the Moyle Valley Rail Trail meetings, um. So I did talk to Mike Green today, finally. He is impressed there. He has gone to a lot of the meetings. Already. But you can also do an alternative one and an alternative two. I'll probably, um, I'll probably continue to go to the meetings when I can. I don't live to be the primary. But just saying. Unless you want me to put it on the website or. Not the website, um. Um, or if there were somebody who asks me for volunteers.
I think, isn't there an aspect with this, which is the. Reptile ambassador within the area?
Well, that's a whole other thing. They haven't defined that, you know, it's an ambassador program, and that would be volunteers from the community.
Yeah.
That would commit to a, I think you know, as a lot. Um, so that would be different than attending the meetings, but they are looking. That when they, um, get this ambassador program approved. The state seems to have. Quenches on everything, you know? And then it's kind of don't know what we can, can't do. Uh, they're pretty particular. And so they've set up these regional trail meetings through the planning commissions. And they need, and then they have to all agree on things. Um, and judge the tax law, then sometimes have their own local rail trail committees. Johnson has the very own. Um, I can't really see why we would need one. Um, you know, Johnson is trying to promote your businesses and, you know. Their natural resources and so forth.
And they're, they're restoring. Maintaining the entire rail line where the rail line used to be.
For the state.
Yeah, it's now a rail trail.
Yeah.
Which period.
Yes.
Those are the, the money to Johnson.
So they're gonna move it to us here till, till August, I think. But there, there's some people, a lot of stuff on the towns.
Being stuff like, you know, tree falls down, that easy stuff that they don't have to respond to in five minutes.
Well, we're not allowed to cut that tree. We have to call them, there's a form on there, or if you wanna, um, yeah.
They exhibit a tag on it.
I will, is what they say.
In your sleep.
If you wanted to any events on the rail trail, you have to fill out a form that. And then probably a fee, you know, like the dog laces and stuff. Um, you can't put any of your signage on the rail trail. They've got all their own signage and they'll just say like business district, the dots, um, that's it. Um. If, I don't know. And what I don't like is they have a map of the rail trail, which is, I think it's pretty sparse, it is. Sections of the trail where you can have a. Battle and farm, that's about it, um. They have trail and. Run them. It's trail and what can be on there, what can't be on there. But then they have a separate website for businesses along the rail trail, you know, tourism. You know, let's let's do this.
I think we're a real good thing.
I thought maybe give them a year, you can pick one, two years.
Yeah, maybe.
Right.
I, you know, it, you know, the lenders get a, like, by.
And when they're talking about banning those, like. They aren't.
There are.
Well, this, you know, it's.
It's not a TV.
It's just, but not, no.
I get one, I wouldn't dare go forty mark now.
E bikes, e bikes allowed on there. Horses. Dogs, I don't have control. But the ambassador could like three people that are going through, or someone had, um, a first aid issue. Or they needed information on where they were. Or they saw a tree down, or they saw, um. A motorized vehicle on there.
Oh, yeah. They've already seen some of that.
Yeah, and taking pictures of it, um. Doing things bundled into jail, so we're gonna, um. Nominate, um. Mike Green is our representative to this rail trail regional committee for one year.
Yep.
Um. I would find be. An alternate. Well. He doesn't draw. Alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
It's great.
Alright, uh, rail, uh, parking signage. We are having problems, well, we have run into this week.
Oh.
Corley Road.
With the, and the fog road, Corley Road.
Yeah. It is.
They're both the, the parking signs. Um, and these will be custom signs that will direct them to the parking.
I agree.
I got both. That's just, yeah, so that's a project that's under investigation. We can't forget the link. And we put in a water. We did take down the two signs when we go for the bridge, but. It was pointed out to us that goes with the octoplane signs, so. Um, so now I'm really careful about it, but they comply with the new scheme.
Hmm.
Um, and Burton signed it the same way.
Let's keep going about those signs, and what you hit the golf road. The laws, blur, and you may include the noise. It was just what it's, I'm sorry, no, I don't see this.
So, um, does that mean we have to wait till the middle of July then? To order them? I mean, does it cost us anymore for shipping? Just to order them?
No, not even, now, yeah. They're all the same time. They want to, they want to wait too long. These would be custom signs because they're going to direct.
Right.
To to Charlie. Hello.
Why do we need them now? I could not. The ones, wondered why we needed to wait.
Don't you need to?
Oh, if it's, it's time and you wanna work on the green burial, so. You can talk tomorrow's and wordage or something.
This is the time, this is the time to publish a. But wow. Who's in charge of that, I think, state?
Well, that's the, that's, yeah.
They could.
Fishing, fishing.
Yeah, sort of like one of those also.
Yeah.
Now, when you turn out a road. Needs. Home, we.
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't you make that into a parking area and make a trail down to the rail trail?
I thought the same thing, but I don't know, I don't, I don't think they're into the parking.
And to me, that would make more sense of having some, have a long, orderly road.
They don't want to.
Cause.
Right, but I mean, that would get them from there to the, for at least four to five years, you know? Not.
It's pretty dangerous.
I mean, maybe Mike Green can bring that, or. Their suggestion, just, I mean, how hard would it be just for them to kind of clear the path now?
I don't think they want a new parking. You're kind of throwing a lot of that stuff at towns. They're figuring most towns will have an economic benefit, um, we don't really have one.
That's why Jackie's kind of throwing this lamb every year. Basically, she said, we kill everyone. But here's, not something, but she said, I love the idea of clearing quickly, because now you can see.
Right. That was one of my concerns too, that. Nobody could see, and then we could put our own signage of our own choice on that.
Yeah.
Anything else? We're busy night.
With the pollution.
Go ahead.
No.
All right, I'll make you watch your. Yeah. Yeah. Not where, you're gonna have to go with these.